I want to call this meeting to order. Please stand and salute the flag.
What's we doing?
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Linden Board of Education, May 2024 Board Meeting. I call this meeting to order. In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follow. On January 10, 2024, notice was sent to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, Tapabinter Linden, Union County Local Source, and Clerk of the Municipality. By state law, there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items in this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to hearing as is allowed at the regularly scheduled board meeting under the Sunshine Law. Roll call.
Ms. Ulyss.
Present.
Ms. Armstead.
Present.
Ms. Carrillo. Ms. Centron.
Present.
Mr. Dela Cruz. Ms. Pino.
Present.
Ms. Rosada Quezada. Ms. Thomas.
Present.
Dr. Burghammer.
Present. I also want to welcome our school advocate. For those people, you have been away for a little while, so can you reintroduce yourself to the audience?
Hi, my name is Azori Rainey, and I'm the senior class president at Linden High School.
Thank you. I just want everyone to know that even though we are a Board of Education, the voice of the student is always the loudest voice in the room because we are here to learn from them. Item one, we're going to approve the meetings.
You want to read it?
Motion to approve the minutes of the work session held on April 23, 2024, and the regular meeting held on April 25, 2024. Roll call.
I need a second.
Oh, second.
Second. Roll call.
Ms. Ulyss.
Yes.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
Ms. Centron.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Yes. Now, this is a part of the meeting I always like very much. But before I do, I always like to read the board president's minutes. I want to welcome you to our May 24 Board Meeting. I want to thank Superintendent Perkins and her staff for all their hard work. I want to thank Mr. John Serrapilia for the great job he continues to do in our finance department. But I also want to thank my board attorney, Mr. Garcia, who continues to check and double-check board members' work to make sure that we are always doing what's right for our students, parents, and the community. Thank you, Mr. Garcia. As we review this month's agenda, you will notice that we have accomplished so much in the month of May, but we still have so much more to do. May was a very busy month. The board wants to show our appreciation to our principals on the principal appreciation month. You are the best. The board wants to thank you for your hard work and continued service. Please clap the principals. There was something, there was another event that was also absolutely amazing. In May, 11 teachers were honored at the Keen University Governors Award. These teachers received the prestigious Teacher of the Year Award. Please applaud. Join me in applauding all these teachers. Now, we can't leave our students out. In May, we also honored students who received the Seal of Biliteracy Award. Students who have studied and attained proficiency in two or more languages by high school graduation received this award. Thank our students. But because we are one country with one dream, it is our vision that every student, whether they are born in this country or another country, will be able to speak one or more language by the time they graduate from high school. Another amazing achievement of our students, we also had the outstanding Student Scholars Award. This is an award given by the College Board to students who have gotten high scores on a number of AP exams. I can't forget this event because I was there. I want to talk about our high school prom. Our high school prom was a great event where we had the opportunity to see all our students dressed up. It was simply amazing and beautiful to see our young future leaders dress up in night gongs and suits. But I also liked the cars they were driving. But we also had stay testing. Stay testing. Our students all showed up, and they tested. And when I asked most of our principals in the back of the room, when I asked them, "How do you think our students will do?" Answer, what do you say? All right. In conclusion, a lot of great things continue to happen in our Linden School District. For such a time, we will continue. We will continue to work together to move the Linden School District forward. Thank you for listening to me. Now, our next agenda item is comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize the Raise Your Hand Feet here on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time, and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operation of this meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on agenda items for three minutes. Now, please, before you come up here, of course, we want you to state your name and address. But we also want you to pay attention to the clock we have here. As you see, there's a lot of people in this room, so a lot is going on. So we would really appreciate if you could keep all your comments to three minutes or less so we could keep it going and keep the energy up and keep excited. So now, the floor is yours. Yes. Yes, please.
That case of water is going to bother me. Why is that case of water on the table?
Good afternoon, everyone. It's so beautiful. It's packed. This is amazing. You know, in this room, I see the future of our country, the next president of the United States. This is really beautiful to see all of you here at a Board of Education meeting. Well, I would like to comment on item 32, 33, and 34. And also 31.
Which, which, which page?
Page of the education report. Okay, I would like to thank the board for allowing us to continue with our Seal of Biliteracy program. The purpose of the Seal of Biliteracy, our goal is to have our students, by the time they graduate from high school, to be proficient in more than one languages. And I'm happy to announce that we are expanding our mentoring program. So next year... I often say what we do whenever we make decisions as educational leaders, it has to be purposeful. And the reason why we are expanding our mentoring program, you have to think about the global things globally. This will give our students an opportunity to be competitive in the world. And mentoring is the language of the future. So therefore, I would like to thank the board for allowing me to expand the mentoring program in our elementary school because research says that at the elementary school is when you start. To wait until middle school, it's too late. So it is my goal, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Dani Arlene, and I am the Director of Multilingual Learners in the Linden School District. I won't be long, but I think it's important that we hear this. And for the young people that are sitting here, consider learning a second language. It's not easy, but in the future, it will pay off because being bilingual is an asset. And I want you to remember that. So I'm working hard for you. And the third thing that I would like to talk about is to thank the board and also Superintendent Perkins for allowing me to expand the vision of our department. So we have created an ESL bilingual leadership team. And the purpose of the bilingual leadership team because we understand our teachers in order to be...
I am so sorry we weren't...
I know, I know. We're doing a lot of great things. We've also created a language proficiency team.
We have our next comment section at the end of our meeting.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome to stay.
Thank you, guys. We're doing a lot of great things in our Linden Public Schools.
Craig Haller, 120 Donaldson Place. Ms. Lewis, I realize it's not a lot of time between Tuesday and today, so the paperwork that I asked for, the numbers I asked for, I'm glad to come in and have a meeting with you at any time at your request. Other than that, anything I have to say about the agenda items, I probably said on Tuesday, so that would be just about it for tonight so far. So looking forward to talking to you to get the information I requested. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haller.
Mike Pecos, 31 Union Street, Matteawan. Previously, 38 of my 40 years living in Linden. My parents still live here, and my nephew still attends school. Good evening, Superintendent Perkins, members of the Board of Education.
Everyone in attendance, students, everybody that's getting honored today, principals.
Everyone's amazing. I love this town. I grew up here. It's in my bones here. So I wanted to congratulate everyone, including my sister-in-law Heather Pecos, who's School Two Teacher of the Year, also on her new position that she attained today. And for everybody in their new positions, wish you good luck on your new adventures. So just wanted to say, in August of 2008, I was an enormously anxious new teacher at Linden High School, starting at the new teacher orientation, sitting in the LHS auditorium, probably sweating out of nervousness. And who do I sit next to? Brand-new social studies teacher, Dave Walker. We quickly became great friends, and I've had the pleasure of watching Mr. Walker grow into an exceptional teacher, doing all that he could to help students be their best, including dressing up as Abe Lincoln in school in his lessons. He then took all of that same passion that he had for his students, knowledge, expertise, and the love of children into all of his administrative positions in this district, from vice principal at LHS, School Ten principal, and now assistant superintendent. I've had the pleasure to work on many projects with Dave from back when he was teaching at the high school to now the instructional leadership teams. So I wanted to just personally congratulate him as a new assistant superintendent and just recognize his skills and expertise that will greatly benefit this amazing, amazing district.
Thank you. Do we have anyone in line? Nobody in line?
Okay, at this time, we go to our next agenda item. Yeah, this time we go to our next agenda item, the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. I will start my report with sharing the loss of two staff members, and we are deeply saddened by their deaths. Thomas Long was hired by the Linden Board of Education in 1951 as a driver-education instructor. During his 41 years, Mr. Long served as a vice principal at Soul Middle School, a principal at McManus Middle School, an assistant superintendent from 1972 through 1986. And then in January of 1986, Mr. Long became the superintendent until his retirement in 1992. Mr. Long passed away on May 20. Secondly, we have Ann Toprvesky, who was hired by the Linden Board of Education in 1996 as a secretary. During her 26 years, Ann was a Benefit and Special Education Secretary until her retirement in 2022. Ms. Toprvesky passed away on May 16. May peace and love and memories be with both families during this difficult time, and may we continue to just honor their roles here in the Linden Public Schools and wish them much peace. Now, I am going to speak to retirements. We had a special board meeting on May 17 where it was approved of the retirement for Mr. Chiron Zaire. He started his teaching career as a teacher of health in 2004 at Soul Middle School for four years. He then became vice principal at Schools One, Two, Four. From vice principal, he became the principal at Schools Two and McManus Middle School. He then became the principal director of Linden High School's alternative programs. And Mr. Zaire will conclude his 23rd year on May 31. And he was serving in his last role as Director of Equity in Education and Alternative Programs. On May 31, we have Jacqueline Burns, who started her teaching career as a teacher of pre-kindergarten in 2000. She has taught pre-kindergarten for the past 24 years at School Number 10 and School Number 5 until her retirement in July. Tim Hess started his career in 2015. He has worked as a paraprofessional at Schools Number Four and Two until his retirement in July as well. Mal Gorzada Zeta started her teaching career as a teacher of science in 2005. She has taught science for 19 years at Soul Middle School until her retirement in July. Arlene Susko started her teaching career as a teacher of special education in 2003. She has been a resource teacher for the past 21 years and also taught Schools Number One, Two, Five, and Six also as an autistic teacher. And she is currently assigned at Soul Middle School and plans to retire in July. Shirley Thomas started her teaching career as a teacher of science in 1999. And she has taught science for 25 years at Soul Middle School until her upcoming retirement. Thank you to all of our educators for their passion and dedication to our students and families of Linden Public Schools. Each month, I share out our staff attendance patterns. And for the month of May, 33% of our staff have been absent, and 63% of those absences needed a substitute. Our staff positions that we currently have open, which are on our website, we have 35 certificated positions open for the 2024 school year and 15 non-certificated staffs. So please, if you know of anyone, have them go to our website. As we look forward to our upcoming calendar, I like to remind everyone that on June 4, school will be closed for Election Day. June 10, June 19, we are closed as well. LHS students will begin final exams on June 12 and will have half-days. All students' half-days will begin on June 20 with no lunch served. The last day of school is June 24. And middle schools, Soul and McManus, will be having their graduation ceremonies. The Linden High School ceremony will take place on Tuesday, June 25. I have a lot more things to celebrate. Thank you, Dr. Burghammer, for sharing some of those highlights. You spoke to the Seal of Biliteracy, the prom, as well as student recognitions. I'd like to say congratulations to Eliana Penaranda Zamora. She was recognized for spreading the message that celebrating our differences enriches and strengthens each of us and our world. And this took place at the 21st Annual Unity Achievement Award. Linden High School senior Omar Zucha placed third in District 10 in the Congressional Art Competition hosted by the late Congressman Donald Payne Jr. in a nationwide event that's been held since 1982. Eighth-grade ML student Anayo Shu Quastvilo participated in the New Jersey Teachers of English and Speakers of Other Languages Writing Challenge. And we are pleased to say that she won a scholarship and is being recognized this evening at their annual awards reception. Congratulations. I'd also like to say thank you to eighth-grade science teacher, Ms. Canister, who played a pivotal role in supporting her with getting that scholarship. And now, I'd like to speak to the principals. May you please come forward. There is a table over here towards my right with the roses on there. And we'd like for you to come on up around the roses. All right, principals. Okay, well, Dr. Burghammer is going to come on down. And as you were walking up, she just said to me, "See, I told you, this is what we do here in Linden Public Schools. We honor you. You are the leaders of our buildings, and we appreciate everything that you do." So I'd like to acknowledge your position. And the roses are there to signify what we do believe is the hard work and dedication that you bring forth each and every day. Just as the rose blooms and spreads in its vibrant petals, we know that you nurture and empower those around you to help them flourish and reach their full potential. Your guidance and support inspires many to strive for greatness because you create a harmonious learning environment. The yellow rose symbolizes friendship, joy, and new beginnings. And that's what we expect from our students to receive each day they come into the buildings that you lead. Thank you for being the type of person where you're warm and approachable, and you create an atmosphere where everyone feels valued and supported. The orange rose, on the other hand, represents enthusiasm, passion, and creativity. Because of you and your innovative ideas and creative thinking, we get to continue to push forward with continuous improvement to help embrace and unlock what we truly believe each and every person has inside of them. And it's being able to think for themselves because they believe in themselves. So principals, on this special day, we believe in you, and we say thank you for all that you do for Linden Public Schools. Congratulations. We have dinner prepared for you in the back because we want to make sure that you're always nourished and ready to go. And as you take your rose, remember, continue to spread positivity and inspiration everywhere you go. Thank you. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Burghammer.
Principals, I want you guys to look at the rose. Take a look at the rose and remember, as every rose opens, and when they open, some of them open fast, some of them open slower, but they are all beautiful. I want each one of you guys, when you look at the rose, think of your students. Every one of your students are beautiful. Some open faster than others. Some never open, but they are all beautiful. I want you guys ever so often to buy a bouquet of roses and put it on your desk to remind you of the beauty in each and every one of your students. Thank you.
So I'd like to just give you a shout-out. We have Mr. Kuntz at Linden High School. Ms. Long, Soul Middle School. School Number One, Ms. Diaz. School Number 1, Ms. Diaz. School Number 2, Mr. Fingerlin. School Number 4, Dr. Olivero. School Number 5, Ms. Crawley. School Number 6, Mr. Mastriano. School Number 9, Ms. Principato. And, last but not least, who's about to shift over to a new role pretty soon, once it's board-approved, School Number 10, Mr. Walker. Now I'm going to ask our science supervisor, Ms. Apelinski, and she's going to help us with recognizing students from Linden High School who are involved in science research. They were recognized by the City of Linden last week at their committee meeting, and we are just pleased and honored to have our students, yes, please, say yes to a challenge, learning, and growing, and more importantly, teaching us.
Thank you, Mrs. Perkins. This evening, we're proud to celebrate some outstanding, highly motivated students committed to the endeavor of science. These students are all members of the Linden Public Schools Chapter of RUES, which is the Rutgers Youth Enjoy Science Program, which seeks to encourage youth from groups that are underrepresented in biomedical sciences to pursue cancer research and other healthcare careers. Along with their advisors, high school teachers Pramila Natarajan and Mr. Tristan Mondesir, we are so very proud of you. Our first three students are recognized for their participation in extensive research and training at Rutgers University for 10 weeks over two summers. First up, for her research on the P53 cancer suppressor gene, is Deanna Lesko Flair. For his research on cancer chemotherapy-induced cognitive deficits is Diego Sanabriga. And for her research on novel immunotherapy targets, Ida O'Brennan Mercia. And as Mrs. Perkins mentioned, we're thankful to the city council and mayor who invited them last week to present their findings and their research. So if you want to check it out, you can see a portion of those presentations if you watch the May City Council meeting recording. I'd like to now recognize four students for their commitment to the success of the Linden Youth Enjoy Science Club. Each of you is an invaluable asset to the work of the club, its efforts to support future biomedical careers, and the design and success of the cancer health fair. The club has depended so much on your expertise and hard, creative work. Three of the students could not be here, but I still want to mention them. Kathleen Del Carmen. Camilla Restrepo. And Kyla Denville. But we're thrilled to recognize Irene Magosi, who's here with us this evening. So congratulations to each of you again. You are the future of industry, research, and scientific exploration in our local community, nation, and I suspect globally. You are equipped to find the solutions to our world's most pressing problems, and we can't wait to see how your next chapters unfold.
I will now turn it over to our student representative, Mrs. Zori Rainey, who will share more information.
Good evening. As the school year ends, the seniors are excited about the upcoming senior events. Our prom on Thursday, May 23rd, was a great success, and I want to extend my gratitude to the class advisors and school staff who helped make this possible. With our Decision Day event approaching at Linden High School, I look forward to seeing my peers' college decisions and celebrating our achievements. My recent actions afforded me the opportunity to visit my future college and prepare for the tradition. The Chick-fil-A Leadership Academy had their last meeting this Wednesday after school. Being a part of this Leadership Academy was one of the best decisions I've made, and I love giving back to the community. We thank you all for your support.
Thank you. Now I'd like to recognize teachers and students, and I am pleased to say that we are going to have one of our students share her talent this evening. We are so thankful for Ms. Abigail Armstead. She is one of our 11th grade students, and she won a talent hunt competition, first place for a vocal category. Please come on up, Abigail, and we'd like to also just acknowledge her teachers, Mr. Whitmore and Ms. Barbara Brady, for their support. And Coach and Abigail. You think you've captured me, my body and my soul. You think I'm yours and your command and your control. You bid me dance for your pleasure and your glee, and I could stand your stubborn knee. But now I will dance over if that day I don't live to see. I dance through the day I am free. Thank you so much, Abigail. We are so proud of her. That's your sister, right? Mayor Armstead, we are, thank you for being here, Mayor Armstead. We are now going to transition into the next award, which is our public service announcement. Mayor, we are so thankful for the support that you provide our district. This initiative that we partnered with for students to be able to show their creativity by expressing what it means to keep our schools safe and compete for a financial award given by you, mayor, and the city, what else can we say but thank you? Thank you. So now, tonight is the night we are going to announce the winners. And so I am so thankful for the hard work that the students put into these videos. We had over 31,000 views on these videos. We had over 2,500 votes for our students. In elementary, students will win $500 cash. Secondary, middle school, $750. And then on the high school level, $1,000. And all they had to, I know, look, check your pockets, right? All they had to do, all they had to do was just show up and to express their creativity. So this is what we're about, so thank you. So we're going to call up all student groups, and then because we would like to just recognize you, we'll start on the elementary level. You'll come up, and then we will announce the winner on each grade, okay? So here we go. From School Number 1, video titled "Say No to Bullying," Noah Codis. Please come on up. School Number 2, "Together We Keep Our Schools Safe," all 5th graders. School Number 4, "Ways to Keep My Schools Safe," Joy Dorcelli. School Number 5, "Keeping Our Schools Safe for All," Sana Donaldson, Soraya Bartholos, Oh, Gatsby Michelle, Amelia Gonzalez, Jeffrey Vittoria, Amore Doty, Ariana Doty, and Kalen Valley. You're here, okay. School Number 6, "Getting to Schools Safe," Matthew Espinzeito. Safety First, Neela Yasincuk. School Number 8, "Keeping Our Schools Safe for All," Dashie Corby Bashevele. Security Advice, Luciana Rojas de la Cruz. Why We Shouldn't Bully, Caleb Meza. School Number 9, Safe at School, Kyra Walsh, Danielle Lopez. Aria Reyes, Amber Crabe Yorros, Aiden Jay Hong, Andy Lu, Allison Ortiz. Thank you all for your contributions and being a part of this event. And now it is time for the winners. Drum roll, please. Give them a drum roll, drum roll. And it goes to Why We Shouldn't Bully, Caleb Meza. Come on up, Caleb. Come on over here, Caleb, and here you go. So cute. Oh, that was golden. That was golden. That was so cute. That was priceless. He doesn't want to say anything, but he feels amazing. So, all right, you feel amazing. Congratulations. Thank you, everybody. Hey! Good to see you all. Keep up the great work. Thank you. We will now move on to middle school. Just help me out. Our middle school entries, Soul Middle School, It Takes a Village, Credo Degbay. Walt, We Are Learning Too, by Mackay Holmes. Ways to Positively Enhance School Safety and School Security, Nasir Moore. Better Safety Procedures, by Victoria White, Christine Vincent, and Shadira Rogers. McManus Middle School, Entries Were Keeping Our Schools Safe for All, by Unano. McManus Middle School entries, We're Keeping Our Schools Safe for All, by Unano Chukotia Safe Havens, Nurturing a Secure School Community, by Amina Turner. Keeping Our Students Safe, by Giuliani Chistoffe. Keeping Our Schools Safe for All, by Miriam Corbachavelli. Swipe Less, Live More, Beating Phone Addiction, by Nathan Dos Santos. Safety, by Nicholas Labatane. Stranger, Some Ways to Improve School Security, by Rebecca Joseph. Talking About School Security, by Rudaya Kuganaya. How to Behave During a School Lockdown or a Shelter in Place, by Kira Kitchineko and Zuzanna Slawaniski. School Safety, by Jaden Sarmento, Catalina Pretel, and Zofia Fusco. And now for our winner. Drum roll, please. Our winner for our middle school public service announcement safety video award, winning $750, goes to Walt, We Are Learning Too, by Mackay Holmes. Oh, this is amazing. Our winner would like to say a few words. Oh, he came prepared? Wow. At first, I want to thank all the students that participated. Give her a round of applause for them. And second, I'd like to give a special shout out to all the parents here, because if it wasn't for us, they wouldn't be, or if it wasn't for them, we wouldn't be here. So give her a round of applause for them. And I don't know about anybody else, but it's a privilege to be here tonight, and I'm trying my best to not take advantage of it. But I'd like to give an apologize, because about my video, it wasn't all a topic about safety. But one thing we often tend to forget, and as the people in our villages, we may never know who may need a helping hand one day, or who you can call on for your help and when emergencies taking place. So I'd like to say thank you, and I appreciate this to the max by the way you shout out to your parents, and because if it wasn't for you, they wouldn't be here again, again.
I just want to let you all know something. This young man would stop by my office with a cooler, with candy bars, and he would sell candy in my office. I just want to let you know, you're gonna have to sell a heck of a lot of candy bars to make up $750. I'm so proud of him, I really am. He's a hustler, no doubt.
We're so proud of all of you. Congratulations. Thank you so much. And now we're going to go to the high school level. Propagate a Better School Environment, by Christian Metaros. Safe School Environment at LHS, Elvia Doong and Jahan Del Carmen. Fire Safety PSA, Kayla Lewis. Keeping Our Students Safe, Erica Hernandez and Zoe Mora and Elijah Patterson Butler. Well, drum roll, please. Safe School Environment at LHS, Elvia Doong and Jahan Del Carmen. They couldn't make it this evening, so stand tall, Mayor. There you go, hold it up high, that's it, right? Congratulations to all of you for participating. Thank you. Would you like to say anything, Dr. Berghammer?
It takes a village. Listen, one of the problems we are always hearing is that our schools are not safe. That's what we always hear, all the schools are not safe. So the only way we could make the schools safe is to have the students put out these videos, continue to express themselves, because we still live in a world where each one teach one. Thank you.
I'm gonna close out by saying, this is what happens when two governmental agencies cooperate. The Board of Education and our city government, we work together. We work together. And it's all, it's all for the betterment of our children, because at the end of the day, it's not about us anymore, it's really about them. And I tell everybody, whether you like it or not, get ready to pass that baton, because you're gonna have to. And we can't, we're not gonna be able to do this forever. We could do more to preserve our future by making sure that they're successful. And thank you all, all you young people for participating, all the teachers, all the staff who participated, thank you all, because this was a great event. Thank you.
Guys, the city of Linden is doing something wonderful. The city of Linden and the school district is doing a partnership. We would like, the city said that they would like to dedicate every evening from 4:00 to 6:00 to us on Channel 36 for student and school programming. I'm sure a lot of you guys have looked at Television 36, right? How many of you guys look at TV 36? So on different cable channel, it may be different. 42, 36, 42. The thing is, in between the hours of 4:00 PM and 6:00 PM, we start having school programming. I know it's gonna be a real big endeavor, because as Brianna Armstead said, it is no easy thing to do this. But what if you could sit at home as a parent and be able to watch the basketball games, the high school basketball games, or the football games, or all the other events that are taking place in our school district? One of the things we want to do is that we want to bring the city and the school district closer. We want parents to know what's going on in our schools, and the only, the easiest way to do it is to have school programming. So this is what we want to do, from Monday to Friday, between the hours of 4:00 PM and 6:00 PM, hopefully it will get our students off the street and in the house, watching what's going on at the schools.
In the same way that we've invited you to participate in this, we're gonna invite you to participate in designing videos and whatever that you, things that you can do on your own, so it can be placed on our TV channels. So that's gonna be a great endeavor, and we're looking forward to it.
Yes, it does. It takes a village. Thank you so much. And now we are segueing right into our It Takes a Village. It Takes a Village, we are pleased that we get to honor and acknowledge a student, a staff member, and a community member. And so I would like to call up Ms. Diaz, principal of school number one, who will speak to the student to share more. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am so proud and honored to announce school number one, It Takes a Village Award winner. It wasn't an easy process to select the student that embodies the motto of our school, be kind, work hard, and expect success. Mia, congratulations on being awarded the It Takes a Village honor. Your recognition as an outstanding fifth grader truly warms our hearts, and is a testament to the wonderful person that you are. You embody the words be kind in every action that you take. Your kindness radiate through your interactions with both peers and teachers, leaving lasting impact on everyone around you. Your selflessness shine bright through your efforts to help our ML students by translating for them and aiding them in their assimilation into the school life. Just know that the things that you do don't go unnoticed. Your willingness to go above and beyond to support others is truly admirable and set a beautiful example for all of us. It's not surprise that you're not only admired by your teachers, but also loved by your peers. Your compassionate nature, your dedication to help others create a ripple effect of positivity through our school community. Keep being the incredible person that you are, Mia. Your kindness, hard work, and determination are inspiring and make our school a better place. We are so proud of you.
Thank you, Mia. Keep up the great work. I see you have a few photographers with you, all right. Come on, if you, if you got it, take it, go ahead. We are now going to ask Principal Coontz of Linden High School to come up to acknowledge our staff member for It Takes a Village Award.
Thank you, Superintendent Perkins. Good evening, everyone. Want to say congratulations to all of the appointees tonight, all of the award winners, all of the retirees. Congratulations to Brother Zaire for all of his hard work to the district. Yeah, please, give him a round of applause. He's done a lot of work for the district. I want to congratulate Brother Wayne Happel back there on his appointment tonight. He's a good man, absolutely. Ms. Awella, Mr. McGee back there, I want to congratulate everybody on their appointments tonight. You know, as a principal, it's always an honor when you work with teachers that really enjoy their work, they're really passionate about their craft, and no one, for me, exemplifies that more than Mr. Chris Paschewitz. I met Mr. Paschewitz in this room, I met Mr. Paschewitz in this room about a year and some change ago, when I joined the district, and he was right behind that camera with the headphones on his head, doing what he loves to do, right? This man works so hard, day in and day out, with our students as our TV media production teacher. He works with all of our students, all population, honor roll students, ROTC students, athletes, multilingual learners. I mean, this man puts the work in. And I'm truly honored tonight to be here, to work with him and all of his hard work. A few weeks ago, he took our kids to Orlando, Florida, on a, yeah, on a Disney Imagination Campus trip. And this is an opportunity for students, actually around the country, that go to Orlando, Florida, and they work behind the scenes, they understand, they learn production, and they network, and they have all types of educational programs. Ms. Armstead was instrumental in working that out with us, Dr. Berghammer, of course, under Superintendent Perkins' leadership, John Sar Piglia, Pam Caparal, we all came together, and we were able to pull this off. When I was informed about this, I said, you know what, I love this, I need to be a part of this, and we need to make this happen, because this is what it's about. It's about giving our students real-world, culturally relevant opportunities to expand the learning, because learning extends beyond the four walls of a classroom, right? That's what our IB program is about. That's what we try to do at Linden High School. We try to give our students that firsthand, real-world experience, and Chris was so instrumental in doing that. I mean, he knocked on doors, they got out in the community, they solicited, they reached out, they partnered with Blaze Pizza, and they, I mean, they really worked hard, and they pulled it off. And I'm so proud of all of their hard work. And tonight, we honor Mr. Paschewitz again. I mean, Chris is so passionate about his work. When you ask him to do something, he not only does it, I mean, he goes above and beyond. He will call you 100,000 times, he will text you a million times, he will email you a million times, and he will make sure that whatever he's committed to do gets done. And that's the kind of commitment that we, that we honor and we appreciate. So once again, thank you, Mr. Paschewitz, for all of your great work.
I just wanted to say a few words about Chris Paschewitz. As you guys know, I'm a product of Linden's school system, and there's very few teachers that are instrumental in who you become when you're an adult. And it's extremely beautiful to see the effort and dedication that Mr. Paschewitz puts into the success and the betterment of his students. When I was on the trip, I got to see firsthand, and I already see, because I visit that classroom quite frequently, I'm a little biased, because I have a TV and film background, but I got to see Chris Paschewitz hands-on, really shaping these kids and nurturing a talent that a lot of people overlook, and also advocating for his students. While he was in Disney, he was telling the instructors, this student is great at this, this student handles this part of our production. And he was really setting them up for internships, making sure that they have a path and a secure career path to success. And it's really amazing to see the work that you do day in and day out. I'm always going to be an advocate and ally, anything that you need, I'm going to be there to support you, because it's really amazing to see what you are doing for our students, and it does not go unnoticed. And those kids, I promise you, they will remember you, because I remember Mr. Walker. You don't forget people like that, and it's really, really beautiful what you're doing.
Congratulations, Chris. Thank you so much. You can take a picture.
Listen, guys, all you guys see me wearing this bunny rabbit, and says, my God, this lady may be crazy, but what happened? Mr. Paschewitz came tonight and said, the student brought us back from Disney World for me, so how do we earn it?
That's it, thank you. All right, and so our last recipient for It Takes a Village is when we look at our community members. This year alone, we saw an uptick in our fire alarms being triggered for multiple reasons. Some may be because they were covered and they were just hit by accident, some may have been for poor choices of students, others just exploratory. But every time that those fire alarms go off, the first person or the first group that is here is the Linden Fire Department. And we are just so thankful for the support that they give Linden Public Schools, and it is an honor to be able to recognize Fire Chief Haskell for the hard work and dedication of our fire department. Thank you, Chief. As we are continuing to teach our students and our staff the best way for fire safety, we do know that you keep us safe, your staff keeps us safe, and we don't take it for granted. The fire engine truck is bright red, vibrant, loud, but more importantly, it's a rescuer for all of us. So thank you, and we wish you peace, we wish you success in everything that you do with covering the city of Linden and our schools. So thank you again.
She's hired.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I just want to say I'm honored, privileged, and humbled to... I just want to say I'm honored, privileged, and humbled to be recognized tonight. I want to thank Superintendent Perkins, Assistant Superintendent Lewis, Board President Berghammer, for recognizing all the members of the board. One of the biggest priorities as a chief of the Linden Fire Department is the safety and well-being of the children of Linden and your students. We put a huge effort into it with our department during Fire Prevention Month. I'm proud to say we get in front of over 1,000 grade school students every year in the month of October, and teach them about fire safety tips, fire prevention tips, and we run a one-week Junior Fire Academy in the summer. So I definitely believe that these efforts that we do reduce the number of fires and definitely reduce the number of injuries, especially to our children. I'm a proud graduate of the Linden School System. I went to School Five, I went to right here, I went to School One right here. I'm sitting here thinking of all the teachers, I know every single name of them when I was here a long time ago, Soul Junior High and Linden High School. And, you know, keeping in the theme with, you know, It Takes a Village, I want to thank the mayor, Council President Amakaitis, they're the ones who give me the resources to help keep, you know, the schools and the students safe. So in closing, thank you very much, I'm very proud of this, and if anybody ever needs anything from the fire department, I have an open door, you come see me, alright? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Haskell, and this, that will conclude the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Moving on to the education report. Good evening, everyone. The Education Committee upon recommendation of Superintendent Schools and the Assistant Superintendent presents the following motion in Linden Board of Education for approval. I approve item one through...
Forty.
Forty? Item one through forty, I respectfully ask for a second.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Ulysses?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
And Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to the personnel report.
The Personnel Committee, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, presents the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. All appointments and reappointments are contingent upon and may be modified based on student participation in the district's receipt of sufficient state school aid and other revenue funding. I, um, let me see. I approve items one through fifty-six, and I respectfully ask for a second.
Second. Roll call.
Ms. Ulysses?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
And Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
Now, this is the time, I always believe, because the only employee that the Board of Education has is the superintendent. So once you guys get hired, we don't know anything about you, so today's the day I would like you to introduce our new hiree so that they could tell the board a little bit about themselves.
On May seventeenth, we put forth the approval of our HR Director, Dr. Kayla Lott, so may you please come up.
Dr. Kayla, what position you were gonna be, you were hired for?
I was hired for the Director of Community Resources. Hi, everyone, good evening. My name is Kayla, Kayla Lott. I am so excited to be joining Linden School District. Thank you to the board, thank you to Superintendent Perkins, thank you to Assistant Superintendent Lewis. I am a, to talk about myself, I started off as a student teacher at Soul Middle School. I then went on to be a math teacher in a neighboring district. I was an administrator in Kenilworth and now in Woodbridge Township, where I'm currently a principal of a middle school, and now I'm coming here. I am also a new resident of Linden, and I have, my most important job is I'm a mom of three kids. I have a, I have an eight-year-old, Ty Lin, six-year-old, Tyanna, and a baby boy, TJ, for all students of School Four. Shout out to Dr. Olivera. Shout out to Mrs. Pandino, Mrs. Hanvey, Mrs. Fallon, and Mrs. Phillips. So I can say, being a parent is a scary thing. Dropping your kids off at school and entrusting a group of people to be in charge of their livelihood and raising them and being good humans is a scary, scary thing. So you really have to believe in a school district when you drop your kids off, when you say, here you are, I'm giving you off to the world. I not only believe in Linden to drop my babies off at School Four every day, but I believed in it so much that I wanted to join and be a part of it. So I'm super excited to join and be here, I look forward to meeting everyone, I look forward to helping Linden push our, move us forward to new heights, and I'm just really excited, so thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Now we'd like for administrators, if you were appointed tonight, you may please come up to the microphone. And we'll save the executive leadership for, you know. So administrators, please come on up.
Good evening, board members and distinguished guests. Muy buenas noches a todos. Congratulations to everybody that's being honored today and that received awards. My name is Maribel Jovan, and I'm honored to be here today as a newly appointed Assistant Principal at McManus Middle School. My career has been marked by a strong commitment to fostering academic excellence and creating inclusive environments. The last fifteen years, I've worked in various roles as a teacher of Spanish, ESL from preschool to high school, language arts for sophomores and juniors, and as an instructor at Columbia University. I hold multiple certificates, including principal certification, supervisor, bilingual, bicultural education, teaching English as a second language, and Spanish. My educational background includes a Master's of Educational Leadership from William Patterson, a Master's of Instruction and Curriculum from K University, and I'm currently pursuing my doctorate degree for educational leadership at San Peters University. Throughout my career, I have led several school-wide initiatives, such as the Diversity Committee and the ESL Parent and Guardian Outreach in my district at Bridgewater, Raritan. I actively advocated for ESL community, led professional development, and mentored new teachers by supporting their professional growth. As an Assistant Principal, I believe that it is crucial to foster a sense of teamwork among the staff. When staff members feel like they are part of a cohesive community, this positive dynamic extends to students and broader community. Coming from a multicultural background, I deeply understand the importance of recognizing and valuing each student's individuality and unique background. This perspective is integral to my education philosophy, which emphasizes in collaboration with families and all stakeholders to ensure that we are united in providing a comprehensive support system for our students. I am excited to bring my experience and dedication to McManus Middle School and look forward to working with all of you to achieve the district's educational goals. Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. Buenas noches a todos. My name is Stephanie Orojuela. I am a teacher of mathematics who's now growing into the Vice Principal position at Linden High School. I'd like to start off by thanking Mrs. Perkins, Dr. Berghammer, and the members of the Board of Education, as well as Mr. Coons for giving me the opportunity to be here today. I've received much support from my mentor, Mr. Thurston, not only when I was in school working towards my master's degree, but since I started working at the high school. His guidance and advice have helped me become the educator and administrator I am today. My journey in Linden has been quite the story to tell. I started off as a student teacher while I was finishing up my bachelor's degree in mathematics. Following this, I was a substitute teacher, which led me to secure a position as a long-term substitute in a math class at the high school. Once I finished my undergraduate studies, I was offered a position as a teacher of mathematics. I'm thankful for the growth I have experienced here, and I'm looking forward to this new journey. I believe in our students, and I believe in our school district and the impact we make on our students' lives every day. Thank you so much for working collaboratively with me. I look forward to working with the administrative team, and I hope to take a positive impact on our students and their educational journey. Once again, thank you so much for the opportunity, and I hope everyone has a great night.
Hello, everybody. I'm Wayne Happel. I'm currently Vice Principal at Linden High School, and on July 1st, I will be the principal at School 10. I'm so excited for that. Thank you so much, Board of Ed, Mrs. Perkins, Ms. Lewis, everybody, for putting your trust in me. So yesterday at our administrators' meeting, Ms. Lewis said, hey, have something prepared, and I just did this, like, I got it in my head, I got it. Today, I got a little nervous, and I was like, let me jot some notes down on my phone, I'm gonna jot some notes down. I'm putting it away. I'm putting it away because in the two and a half hours since it was made official in the, when the minutes were posted, I was sitting at dinner with my good friend, Mr. Mashram in the back. So I had all this planned, I let him see what I was gonna say. He was like, oh, great. But in that time, I've got seventy, eighty texts, handshakes coming in, hugs, and it made me think about what makes this place great. And I say it all the time, it is the people. I've been here twenty years. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I say it all the time, I said it in my interview with Mrs. Perkins. I'm not from Linden, but I'm from Linden, I've been here twenty years, this is my professional home. The people are what makes this great, the people are what get me up and excited every day. I can't wait for this next part, I'm so thankful for all the people that have been there for me along the journey, all the way back to School Four twenty years ago, McManus, McManus, which is my home for sixteen years, and the last three years at the high school. So excited to get to School Ten, do the good work, work with Mr. Walker, hand it off to me. I will treat her well, I promise. So again, thank you to everybody, and thank you to you.
Alright, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Superintendent Perkins, Assistant Superintendent Lewis, Board President Dr. Berghammer, board members and Linden community. My name is Angela Monaco. I am currently the Supervisor of Before and After School Programs for Linden Public Schools, and effective July 1st, I will be the Vice Principal of Soul Middle School. I feel like tonight, it's full circle, there's so many people here that played a role in me as a leader, in my development. Mr. Fingerlin in the back is my first principal at McManus. Mr. Happel, just appointed, was my first VP at McManus. And then, of course, Mrs. Perkins, I did my internship with you, and I learned a lot from you, and I wouldn't be where I am today if it wasn't for you, your guidance, your willingness to work with me, and to help me, build me up to the leader that I am today. So thank you, and I appreciate you always. I'm Linden. Born and raised in Linden, grew up in Linden, graduated from Linden High School, came back home, was a math teacher in Linden. Last February, I was appointed the Supervisor of Before and After School Programs for the district. I'm in charge of the Before and After Care Program at all the elementary schools, the daycare program at School Number 10, and the Twenty First Century Program at what is going to be my new home, Joseph E. Soul Middle School. Every time I walk into Soul, I enjoy it, I enjoy the environment, I enjoy the staff, I enjoy seeing the students, working with the students in my after-school program, and I am super, super excited to collaborate with my new principal, Ms. Long. Through my time working with the Twenty First Century Program, we've built a great rapport and a great working relationship, and I know that's gonna transfer over, effective July 1st, when I'm officially there. I'm super excited, I can't wait, and I'm ready to get to work for our students. Thank you very much, have a great night, everyone.
Good evening, everyone. It is a great honor to be standing before all of you this evening to accept this wonderful opportunity to become the Supervisor of Central Registration, Residency, and Truancy for Linden Public Schools. I want to thank our Board President, Dr. Berghammer, our board members, Superintendent Ms. Perkins, and Assistant Superintendent Ms. Lewis. I am grateful for the trust you have instilled in me. I started my career here in Linden in 2012. I was a teacher at School Number Five for twelve years. Yes, School Five. During this time, I was able to work in this department as Administrative Assistant to Registration with our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Annabelle Lewis, and our Supervisor of Student Services, Mr. Ryan Devaney. You both have encouraged me and allowed me to take on a leadership role within this department, and I am truly grateful for that because it has prepared me for this new role. So thank you so much. While Administrative Assistant, I have increased communication within our departments due to the increase in student enrollment from outside the country. I've worked very closely with our multilingual department. So I want to thank Dani Orlean for your guidance and support as we identified the needs of our students. I look forward to continuing to work with everyone for the betterment of our students. I stand here proudly as a product of Linden Public Schools. Yes, Linden! This district is truly my home. I promise I will do a phenomenal job in continuing to build relationships within our community. I want to thank my friends, colleagues, my mentors, Michelle Rodriguez and Pete Fingerlin, my loving family, and especially my husband, George Suggs, for always supporting me. He's my biggest cheerleader and prioritizes our family over everything. You truly are an inspiration to me. Thank you, thank you, and thank you. Stephanie, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. My name is Stephanie Ross, and I am deeply honored and immensely grateful to stand before you today as a newly appointed Supervisor of Elementary, ESL, and World Languages. I extend my heartfelt thanks for entrusting me with a significant position, and I am excited to embark on this new journey with all of you. I have dedicated myself to the field of education, particularly in supporting our multilingual learners. This journey has marked by countless moments of learning, growth, and the belief that every student, regardless of their linguistic background, deserves the opportunity to succeed academically and socially. As I step in this new role, my vision is clear: to create an inclusive and supportive environment where our staff, students, and community can thrive. I would like to thank and highlight some people who have given me unwavering support and been instrumental in my educational career. I first would like to thank my mother, Maria, who has been a bilingual educator in the Patterson School District for thirty-five years. Yes, they've done thirty-five years. She was honored yesterday at William Patterson University for her dedication and services to her students and community in the Patterson School District. Mom, you are my inspiration, and I thank you for always being by my side every step of the way. To my brothers Kevin and Matthew, thank you for your undeniable support. It is a true blessing to have brothers like you. It is a true blessing to have brothers like you. Secondly, I would like to thank the wonderful Linden Public School staff members who I've worked with during the school year, especially the staff members of the multilingual learner, bilingual, and world language department. A special recognition to our secretaries, Janie and Florencia, who are department's faculty. I also wanna recognize Maggie and Bill, who had the pleasure of collaborating, co-presenting on various topics of best practices that can be implemented in the classroom to best support our MLs. I would like to thank all the school buildings administrators for their support. A special shout-out to two people in particular. School 4's principal, Dr. Olivero, and assistant principal, Colvis. Thank you for your continued support and guidance. Last but not least, there are two amazing leaders in which I am incredibly grateful to work with. Director of multilingual learners, Dani Orlean, and supervisor of multilingual learners in world languages, Tanya Miguelis. In a short period of time, we have accomplished a significant amount of important work to help meet the needs of staff, students, and the community. The work we have achieved together throughout the school year has been filled with much dignity and respect. Now, many of you may not know, but I'm a sports enthusiast. I've played sports all my life, and one of my favorite inspirational quotes that I apply to my everyday life is from one of the greatest basketball players to ever play the game, and no, it's not LeBron James. Who is it? Michael Jordan, who said, "I've always believed that if you put in the work, the results will come." I don't do things half-heartedly because I know if I do, then I can expect half-harder results. Day in and day out, my passion, drive, positive energy, and hard-work ethic always pushes me to never settle for mediocrity. I love what I do and look forward to continue working as a team to empower our educators, inspire our students, and engage our community. And mark my words, the best is still yet to come. Thank you again for this opportunity. Have a wonderful and blessed night. Thank you. Now, the one and only, the myth, the legend, Mr. Dan Walker.
Good evening Superintendent Perkins, members of the Board of Education, Linden faculty and staff, and the entire Linden community. I stand before you with immense pride and gratitude. You see, my journey in Linden began 38 years ago as a young student from the section of Linden known as Bayway, bus each morning to the pre-K Teddy program at School 10. And for the next 15 years, I walked the halls of various Linden schools, from School 10, School 4, School 6, Soul Middle School, and finally Linden High School, growing, learning, and becoming part of a community that I hold so dear to my heart. In 2007, I returned to Linden as a substitute teacher, and from there, my career in education flourished. I became a social studies teacher in 2008 at Linden High School, social studies department chair in 2013, vice principal of Linden High School in 2016, and finally, the principal of Highland Avenue School 10 in 2018. And over the course, over the course of 31 years, as both a student and a staff member in our Linden Public Schools, I have witnessed firsthand the unwavering dedication, resilience, and passion that define our community. Linden is not just where I work. It is so much more than that. It is ingrained into my being, my identity, and I am wholeheartedly committed to this great city. It is with deep connection and love for our district that I am thrilled to continue my leadership journey, beginning in July as the assistant superintendent for academics. I love our students. I love our teachers and staff. I love our administrators. I love our parents and families. And I promise that I will do all that I can to serve each of them with both steadfast commitment and dedication. And as has been the case for the past 16 years, one guiding question will continue to guide all of my decisions. Is this what is best for kids? There is great work to be done, and I am so excited and grateful to be working with you, Mrs. Perkins, with Ms. Lewis, with all of our board members. And I am driven by a strong sense of duty to contribute all that I can to the academic excellence and growth of our district. Thank you sincerely. For your support and for entrusting me with this incredible leadership opportunity. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to come up and speak at this time? You know, let's go Tigers. Come on up, come on up, come on up.
Thank you very much. My name is Mike Rice. Thank you for approving I'm the next boys varsity basketball coach at Linden High School. I have tremendous excitement, energy, very humbled taking over a program with such tradition. The alumni, the student athletes that made this program one of the elite programs in New Jersey. So moving forward, really excited to work with all of you. Tremendous night. I'm really excited about the opportunity, and again, thank you. And hopefully, I'll see you next December in the gym cheering Tigers on. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. You go, girl. What's up, Linden? My name is Tamika Dixon. I, first of all, thank you all for approving me. Thank you to the Linden community, the city of Linden. It's an amazing honor to come back to the place where, you know, I walked the halls and did a lot in the gyms in Linden, and to be able to come back and now be a mentor to these young girls coming up as the new head coach for the girls' basketball team. I am super, super excited to take on this next opportunity, and I'm looking forward to seeing, as Mike said, looking forward to seeing you all cheering our young girls on. We're gonna bring that Linden culture back, that winning culture back. So thank you.
Microphone. Hi, I'm Natalia Cespedes. I'm hopefully going to be the new theater teacher at both Soul and McManus, which I'm so excited for. I am Linden-born and raised, you know. I went to School 4. Yeah. My brother goes to School 4 right now, so yes, love my Koji. And I also went to Soul, so it's great to be back at Soul and to give back to the community that has given me so many opportunities to grow and to be where I am today. So thank you so much.
Hello. I wanna thank the board for approving me as new social studies teacher for the high school. I'm falling into footsteps, I guess, of Mr. Walker, born and raised in Bayway as well. Coming back to Linden, I've been in Jersey City for the past three years, teaching in the Catholic school, and coming back to teach social studies, born and raised in Linden. Thank you.
I guess this is it. We're gonna move to the next agenda item, right? Yes. I had to get up and to say something. Superintendent Perkins always says, "You have to show up." And she just doesn't mean being physically present. She means showing up for the children by being prepared and getting things done. Leading a department of shining stars, I am proud to work with teachers who are relentless in their dedication and who show up every day for our multilingual learners. Together, we have accomplished a lot. And I am proud to announce in September that the opening of our state-of-the-art, multilingual, bicultural welcome center that will serve both parents and students, furthering our commitment to excellence in education. But I wanted to take the time to congratulate my partner, my teammate, Stephanie Ross. You know, I have to say that I am blessed to lead an amazing department. What we have accomplished in a year is amazing. And I could not have done this without my amazing team, my secretaries. We show up every day. I have to say, I have the best job in the world. I get up every day. I can't wait to go to work. My husband has to call me and say, "When are you coming home?" I truly feel blessed. Thank you, Mrs. Perkins. Whenever I come to you with my ideas, crazy as they may be, but you always listen 'cause you know we put the children first. Thank you to the board for approving some of my ideas, like the language proficiency team, our bilingual literacy program, and our leadership program. Thank you so much. And Mr. Walker, we love you. I cannot wait. You'll be my direct boss. You know, but I can't wait to work with you. You have been nothing but helpful when I first took on the position. You gave me the self-confidence that I needed to lead, and I wanna thank you for that. And Ms. Annabelle Lewis and Mrs. Perkins, too. You know, I feel so blessed. You know what? We have the most amazing school district in the world. I love being part of this district. I love the amazing educators that show up every day for our students. I love Linden.
Thank you. One moment, please. Moving on to the...
What did you want to rescind?
Number 9, Item 40. Should I read it again?
No, we're good.
It was done already.
You rescind it, that's fine. She wanted to rescind her approval on one item.
All good?
Yes.
Moving on to the finance report. Finance committee, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools and the business administrator/board secretary, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Items 1 through 94, respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Ulysses.
Yes.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
Ms. Sintron.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to Buildings, Grounds, and Security Report. The Buildings, Grounds, and Security Committee, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools and the business administrator, board secretary, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Items 1 through 10, respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Ulysses.
Yes.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
Ms. Sintron.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Yes.
The Planning, Policy, and Committee, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, presents the following motion to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Excuse me, this is the planning and policy report. For the first reading, approve the updated Board Policy Manual from Strauss Esme Associates LLP, effective July 1st. Policy numbers listed below. I respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Ulysses.
Yes.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
Ms. Sintron.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Yes.
At this time, we'd like to move on to comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize the raise-your-hand feature on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time, and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient, orderly operations of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on items for three minutes. Any comments from the public? Oh, good. This is a first. Anyone online?
Yes, someone's online. Yes.
Can you hold the person online for a second?
Claudia, one moment, please.
Sorry. In following LEA tradition, I was wanting to go last, so I was surprised that I am first and last in person. Good evening, Claudia Dolan, 1309 Thomas Ave, North Brunswick, instructional math coach at Schools 5 and 10, and currently serving as the acting president of the Linden Education Association. I've been in this leadership role for a little under a month, and in the short time, I have realized how intricate and complex this work can be. In the couple of moments I have had to reflect, one thing comes to mind. People don't care about how much you know until they know how much you care. The thing about this care is that it takes time, sometimes a lot of it. While at times it may feel thankless, it is necessary work to care for others, especially when they may not be able to care for themselves. Without being said, I would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to acknowledge the members of the Linden Education Association that lead with care. Being in and out of various buildings, I have the opportunity to see members in various roles demonstrating this leadership day in and day out. I'm in awe of the members I represent and all they do. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Brenda Knister, McManus Middle School, 8th grade, science. First, I wanted to congratulate all the retirees, especially Ms. Seda and Ms. Thomas. The middle school science department is gonna miss both of them very much. And I wanna help them enjoy sleeping in late and relaxing, and I'm super jealous of them. Next, I wanna congratulate Kim Light on her appointment as science coach. We have worked very closely together as 8th grade teachers, and I know she's gonna do a great job in her new position, and we're very lucky to have her moving into that position. I also wanna congratulate all of the students that were honored tonight, especially Ananda, who I know worked very hard on her essay, and I'm very proud that she won that laptop and her award, her scholarship. And I love seeing all those science award recipients because science, one of the best departments, if not the best department, in Linden Public Schools. Abigail, she did a great job, and I still remember her singing in my classroom right before winter break, using a brush and doing her Christmas carols in my classroom. And I know I have that video somewhere, so I can share it. And finally, a shout-out to Mr. Happel and Mr. Monaco, McManus alumni. I'm so excited to see you guys moving up and in the district. So thank you very much, and have a great night, everybody.
Thank you.
Secretary to the Multilingual Learners Department. I just wanted to congratulate Stephanie on your role. We are beyond grateful to have you part of our team, and we look forward to continue growing. So congratulations, Stephanie.
Anyone else online?
Good evening. This is Kim Marie Cofalas. I am a technology teacher at Schools 8 and 10. Sorry I couldn't be there today. It's very crazy with graduations and everything, but... Sorry I couldn't be there today, it's very crazy with graduations and everything, but I am extremely happy with what is happening here today. First, I would like to say congratulations to all the new hires, and I wish you well in your new paths. I am so, so happy, and I'm really mad I couldn't be there for my boy Caleb for his safety video at School 8. He worked so hard on it, and then I remember the first day that I sat with him and I went over, I said, "Here, we're gonna have this contest," and he got right to work, and he used the green screen that I taught him, and he said, "Can I have my sister do it, too?" And I said, "Yes, the more the merrier." And he really worked hard on his video and was so excited, came up to me today in school and said, "Ms. Cofalas, are you going to the meeting?" And I was so sad that I had to tell him no, but I told him I would be listening, and I'm so, so proud of him. Mr. Monaco, I'm so proud to hear of your new vice president, I mean vice president, oh my God, I'm tired, vice principal job. Mr. Monaco was my former student in 3rd grade, and he was very, very organized and a wonderful student then, and I know he'll do a great job as vice principal, not vice president. And so, congratulations, Mr. Monaco. Very, very happy for you. Mr. Happel, welcome to School Number 10. I know you have very big shoes to fill, literally, he's got very big feet, but you have big shoes to fill, and I know that you will be wonderful, and you and I will be talking tech, and it'll be a great time, so congratulations. And last but certainly not least, Mr. Walker, I am so, so proud of you. This is a very hard thing for me, because I'm so happy, but I'm so sad to be missing my Apple pet partner, and I'm gonna miss busting into your office when I find something new and being excited to tell you. So, I might be having some visits at the board office, because I'm gonna have to keep doing that, and so I will really, really miss working with you, and I wish you the best, and I know that you are gonna lead with that big heart of yours, and I just know you're gonna be amazing. So, thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, we're gonna move on to new and unfinished business. I did want to bring back moving our committee meetings for the June, July, and August months to committee as a whole during our work sessions. Mr. Garcia, do we need to make a motion for that, or can we just agree on that?
You can agree on that.
Okay, perfect. So, guys, agree. Thank you. At this time, we're gonna move on to board member comments.
Actually, I have new business. I need someone to make a motion in a second. Last night, we learned that we have to appoint counsel to come in and do a workplace investigation, so I would recommend that we appoint a firm that we're already using, Murphy in Orlando, at the rates that they're already charging us, $165 an hour, to come in and perform the workplace investigation. So, if we can get a motion, a second, and a roll call on that, I would appreciate it.
Motion to hire the company Mr. Garcia just mentioned for workplace investigation? Respectfully ask for a second.
A second.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Ulysses?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Sintron?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to board member comments, if you have a comment.
Are we going in order?
We're gonna go in the back after.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to say a few things. I don't know if we're going in order, so. Okay. I'll be quick, I promise, because I'm sure everybody wants to go home. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for attending, as usual. I know you guys can be anywhere else, but I'm happy that you're here with me on a Thursday night. I would like to congratulate our students, especially my little sister, Abigail Armstead. I'm always shocked and amazed when I see her perform, even though I see her numerous times at our house. I also would like to congratulate all of the new appointed staff members to our district. I know you guys are going to do a terrific job. I've seen you guys in action in your previous roles, and I'm looking forward to seeing you work and flourish in your new roles. But I would like to give a special, special shout out to Mr. Walker, because Mr. Walker was my social studies teacher, and I spoke earlier about teachers that are instrumental in your life, and he was so instrumental in mine. He is a phenomenal person, and I cannot wait to work with you. I'm so, so excited. You got to watch me grow in our Linden district, and now I get to watch you grow in your career, so this is such a blessing. So happy to have you. Quickly, I know that we talked briefly about the Disney trip that we had, where we sent some of our students to Disney World in Florida, and we had a film workshop that they were able to participate in. The students will be here next board meeting to present on what they were able to accomplish and their editing skills. You guys have no idea the talent that we have in our district. These kids are editing, they're putting together top-tier production-quality videos, so make sure that you guys check out what they're producing on TNT News. A lot of people ask me what my favorite part about being a board member is, and it's that, it's being involved with the students, seeing them grow, seeing them, and creating opportunities for them, and being a part of something that will be so instrumental in their lives. So, I just wanted to share that with you guys. I'll share more when we have our June meeting, so I hope you guys all attend so that you guys can see the video productions that these wonderful kids put together. That's all.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, everyone. We really appreciate you coming out to tonight's meeting. I will call a motion for us to move into executive session. If you all would like to disperse, you may. If you would like to wait for us to come back out, you can do that as well. But thank you all for your time this evening. Motion to go into executive? Respectfully ask for a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Ulysses?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Sintron?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Executive, respectfully ask for a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Ulysses?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer.
Motion to close out tonight's meeting.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Ulysses?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Ms. Armstead?
I said yes, I said it fast.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer.
I always forget that, like, the first motion is...